Six thirty and call this meeting to order and start with a bunch of allegiance. Welcome, everybody. Well, now I'll turn things over to the superintendent for tonight's celebration of excellence.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm very excited to share some of the talents of our amazing music students and our amazing music staff. So I'm going to start by asking our music staff to stand this evening. Those that are here, please. I see Mr. Air, who's in charge of our music program K twelve. Want to thank him and Mr. Tyler, our band director back there. I want to thank him as well.
The other two are on the Zoom.
And the other two are on the Zoom. So welcome and thank you for being on, both of you. I appreciate it. Okay, so first I'm going to start with N triple C Music Festival Soloist Recognition for two thousand twenty four. And that goes to Emily Maher. So let's start by giving her around. And back there, she was featured as a soloist in the N triple C Music Festival in November, playing piano in the piece Lightning Field by John Mackey. She prepared the piece ahead of the festival and rehearsed with the ensemble for two days, culminating in a performance at the N triple C concert. Way to go and congratulations. And now for our Eastern Region Music Festival Recognition for two thousand and twenty four. Two students from Bolton High School participated in this year's Eastern Region High School Music Festival at UConn on January fourth and fifth. And eleven students from BCS will participate on February twenty third and twenty fourth at Ram High School. In order to participate in the festivals at both the middle and the high school level, each student had to perform a live audition in front of a professional adjudicator from the Connecticut Music Educators Association. The auditions are highly competitive and it is an honor to be selected for one of these elite ensembles. During each festival, students rehearse for several hours on Friday evening and Saturday morning and perform a concert on Saturday afternoon, featuring several pieces of challenging and exciting repertoire. We're going to celebrate a whole list of students. So I'm going to ask if you just hold your applause into the end, to the end, so that I'm sure everybody's name can be recognized. I'm going to start with high school band Allison Hartzog on flute. There you go. High school chorus Kelsey Perkins soprano. There you go. Middle school band Daniel Doyle trombone. Middle school chorus, I have a whole list. Madeline Baldwin soprano, Cammy Duffy alto, Elizabeth Gagnon alto, Parker Hamilton alto, Neo Iger alto, Adriana Miley soprano, Cora Murray soprano, Avery Norris soprano, Sophia Pietrazello soprano, and Quinn Perkins alto. Congratulations. Please stand and be recognized if you are recognized. Everybody. Congratulations and well done. You are all invited to stay for the entire meeting if you would like to do so. But if you would like to exit, you are free to do so as well.
Here, I'll be back for eight thirty.
Okay. I'm happy. I can stop by if you want.
Maybe Rock is welcome.
Yep, exactly. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
Sure, thank you.
And that concludes my celebration of excellence for the seat.
Well, wow. All right. Well, on to comments from the audience. All right, so additions to the agenda.
I do not have it.
Okay, out to routine business and the approval of minutes. Could I have the motion, please, to approve the minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty three of Education Business Meeting?
Yes, someone.
And then, Ria, are there any questions, comments, or edits on these minutes?
Any question? Who is listed as along with me, the rest for the Bolt Scholarship Month? Is that correct? I'm sure it should be more than that.
Stu Pike? No, that's not correct. We'll fix that.
So that should be correct. And then, is the order of listing, is the first person listed for each committee, the chair?
Yes, I, I believe so.
Because I didn't think I was chair or person. First.
Okay, so I'll have to go back and check that. So thank you for that. It may have been we were just writing. I don't know. I go.
I'm not sure that it matters one.
Yeah.
But.
I gotcha. Okay, yeah, no problem.
Any other
Thank you.
Comments or edits on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed or abstaining. All right, on to Board of Ed Committee Reports of Finance.
Okay, so on finance, thirty nine percent of the budget has been expending in comparison with forty one percent that's under. And of course, social education is an ever-changing landscape. And I have best of the presentation over to superintendent.
Thank you very much. So we have just a few transfers in December. One is a to purchase an instructional supply for an IEP. One was a reclassification to cover the shortfall in music instructional supplies. And one is just a recognition of the transfer that you approved last month for the twenty thousand dollars from benefits to systems to cover the Novus Remote Monitoring and Management licenses, which also included the additional devices.
So do we have a motion to approve the December transfers?
I'll make a motion.
No second.
Thank you.
Actually, do we have any questions or comments? Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstaining. All right, on to VHS Student Rep Report.
All right. From December twenty ninth to January second, Bolton High School had their winter break. Everyone was excited for the holidays and to sleep in. We did, however, all come back well rested. And today seniors had their cap and gown fitting. Seniors were shocked by how fast the year is going by but are excited for graduation. And January sixteenth to the nineteenth, which is on next week, midterms are taking place. Each day there are two midterm periods. The first is from nine forty to eleven forty and the second is from twelve fifteen to two fifteen. And our Bolton senior citizens visited on December twentieth, where they sampled holiday cookies made by students taking a bake shop or culinary class. Our guests were also entertained by chorus and guitar students. Not only do our senior citizens love this event, our students also enjoy hosting and entertaining.
Winter sports are in full swing. The girls' basketball team is currently three and three, while the boys are one and eight. The indoor track team has only had one meet with another coming up on Saturday. Today, the National Honor Society hosted Cookies and Cram for the freshman class twenty twenty seven. This event allows them to review their material from the first semester with upperclassmen who helped prepare the freshmen for their very first year.
Thank you both very much. I know you have studying to do. Feel free to stay, but if you want to go study or play music, as the case may be, please go do yourself. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Good luck on midterms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, Community Meeting Reports. Has anyone been to any meetings? Report on? Oh, yes. I guess we haven't formalized how and when. PTA like to.
The gala tickets are up for purchase now for March first.
March first, yeah, March first is the gala for the.
So the lightness, this between fundraiser also went out. Those are coming in thirteen of next month. So those are the two big pieces plus lots of other things that will be basic explore on their event page. Events are just just nothing that goes to PTA. It's the way to get in.
Awesome.
Thank you. The gala was just a lovely time last year. Still, everybody go.
I guess it's the theme this year, so. To speculate what that means.
Any other community meetings to report on? Now turn things over to the superintendent for tonight's Superintendent Schools Report.
Great, thank you. So we're going to start out with an update on our Bolton Public Schools music program. And it is my pleasure to introduce our academic leader, Mr. Dan Air, who is going to share the update. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks. Um, oh, you got my slide, sorry.
Yeah.
So Superintendent asked me to present this update to you and I decided this year to.
Yeah, can we turn the lights down, please?
I need to leave something to make this. But.
I can do it.
Okay. I practiced earlier.
Yeah. In other words.
I wanted to frame this presentation through the lens of the national core art standards. You know, everyone knows in the music department, we present concerts and, you know, we help students prepare for music auditions and festivals. But I wanted to share with you really the breadth of what we do as music teachers and the thorough and rigorous academic experience that we're providing the students in grades pre-K through twelve. And so these are the four anchor standards for music creating, performing, responding, and connecting. And I want to share a few examples of how we approach these things in our curriculum and instruction. So for creating music, we started using the software soundtrack, the Digital Audio Workstation, in twenty twenty during the pandemic. Just as a way to create music when we were doing virtual learning. But we found that it was a really great tool to teach music composition. So we've got a couple of examples. We have eighth graders that create advertising jingles for a made up product using loops and editing tools in their own voices. Our seventh grade students create storytelling soundscapes with layered drumbeats in the compositions. So those are a couple of things that we can do with with that tool. We also, our choir students do a lot of music arranging of songs that they perform for solo and ensemble concerts that we do throughout the year. Our music technology classes are primarily doing composing and arranging. So music theory also does it in kind of a classical sense. And our guitar students are also doing those things, creating their own original songs with melodies and chords and basslines. So there's, there's a lot going on there that's related to creating. Obviously, performing is probably something you're more familiar with that we do. A couple of highlights with our twelve concerts that we have this year. Last year, we added a third grade reporter concert in the spring and that was, that went over really well in the community. And so we're continuing that. This year, you approved the new modern band course back in the fall. And so we're going to be doing a concert in the spring for them. That's new. I'm really proud of our, our music festivals that we do and the fact that we have seventeen students from the center school and eighteen students from the high school that participate in, you know, relatively small schools. It's, that's a large percentage of students. And so that's something that we're really proud of. Beyond that, though, we have our elementary general music classes where they're doing all kinds of performing, using different instruments and obviously singing and movement. Mary Dombroski does a, an amazing job teaching those things with them. We also have guitar and ukulele in the music survey classes for grade seven and eight. I run a guitar club that's after school once a week at the center school where students can come and experience guitar and ukulele. And then at the high school, we actually have a guitar one and two elective that students can take. And then, of course, we do the, the music festivals, the Eastern Region festivals. I have a student auditioning for the Allstate Festival next month. And we also started participating in the CMEA Elementary Honor Choir and Band that'll happen in April. So that's something that Mr. Beaton, Mrs. Dombroski do at the center school that they started last year. Responding to music, we do in the music survey class some listening journals twice a week. The students do, they answer guided questions about music genres and instrumentation and things that they like and dislike about the music. We do a ton of peer critique activities. It's part of our, our solo and ensemble concert process at the center school where the students in class perform for one another to prepare for the final concert. And they, they have forms where they, they critique and provide feedback for the other groups. So that's kind of built into our curriculum there. They also, when they share projects in the music technology classes, they, they have some peer critique there. So they're responding to each other's compositions. In chorus from grade seven all the way up through high school, the students are really involved in selecting and analyzing repertoire based on certain criteria. And so they actually go through and, and choose music that they want to suggest for concert performance. So rather than me just, you know, giving them music to perform, they actually are involved in that process and responding to the music in that sense. And then, of course, they're always, students are always responding as far as reflecting on their performances and setting goals for growth after every concert and how they want to move forward. And then for connecting to music, we participate in a lot of school-wide and community events. So that, that's a list of, of a few of the ones that we've been doing traditionally. We always have the band and the choir at the Memorial Day Parade Ceremony. We've been doing the September eleventh ceremony for a number of years. I just had students from the middle school chorus, along with the staff band, perform at the Center School Winter Assembly. We've got students singing the National Anthem at all sorts of community events, at sporting events and other things. We are doing a field trip to New York City next month to go see a Broadway show and go to the Museum of Modern Art. So the students on that trip are, are getting both the visual and performing art aspects in one trip. So I'm really excited for that. We've got our fourth grade students all went to see the Coast Guard Band last fall, and that's, that's an annual field trip that we've been doing. And we are also trying to collaborate more with other departments. So with the visual arts, our high school art teacher Greg Gallo does an art show at all of our concerts now. So he's presenting, displaying the students' work at the concerts. We've also teamed up with the culinary department. As the student representative has mentioned, we had the senior citizen cookie tasting event where we had music students perform. And we're looking to do another event in the spring where Mr. Jones, the culinary teacher, is going to do kind of like a dinner and music event with the high school choir that, and we just started putting that together. So we're really, really excited for that. And the next slide, please. So finally, just kind of moving beyond those standards. We are really proud of how we're preparing students for just success in life through our music program. And their experiences they have, especially in performing ensembles, are building confidence for them, you know, because it takes a lot of courage for, you know, a middle school student to get up and perform a solo or a small ensemble for, you know, for the community and having those types of experiences, even performing in front of their peers, is just setting them up for, you know, more confidence later in life as, as they go out and have those types of experiences where they have to, to get up and speak in front of others. Our ensembles require collaboration and contribution from every participant there. So it's, you know, one of the areas in the school where I think students really have to work as a team, more so than in a lot of other disciplines. And a lot of our students go on to perform in college ensembles and in community groups. And some of them continue recording their own music. So the students are taking these skills and they're really applying them beyond Bolton. And we really strive to be a vital part of the larger Bolton community and also foster a sense of community within our program with our students. And so, you know, running the clubs like the guitar club and the jazz bands and doing these field trips and having special events like the Community Color Run that we did in the fall. We're really trying to, to provide a safe space where the students can express themselves through the arts and also just feel a collective sense of pride in their accomplishments. And, and I, I feel like we're, we're in a really good place in that sense, too. So I wanted to say I'm really proud to work with the exceptional team that I have of Mr. Beat, Mr. Dombroski and Mr. Langworthy. And we truly appreciate the board's support. You've funded a lot of new instrument purchases in recent years. You've supported us going on these field trips and being a part of these community events. And you make sure that we have all the resources we need to give our students the best possible experience. So we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Air, very much. And I would like to thank Mr. Langworthy and Ms. Dombroski and Mr. Beat as well. They do an amazing job. Does anybody have any questions for them?
My only question is, how's the participation rate? So at the middle school, is it required?
It is.
I think it's right that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So for pre-K to eighth grade, every student is in music, every student in the school. And high school, we're at, I think, about thirty five percent of the high school students are enrolled in some music class.
Which, that's a lot for any high school, by the way.
I mean, a lot of high schools, you're, you're looking at five to.
Five to ten percent is the, is usually the going rate.
Very good. Very robust. That's great.
Well done and thank you very much. Good job. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Teaching and Learning, Monica, for a technology replacement cycle and update. Yep, thanks. Get to the right one, right? Dan, you don't have to stay. You have a little one at home.
Pleasure.
Yes. But thank you for being willing to. That's very nice of you.
Hi, this is, this is just a quick technology update from sort of where we stand right now. It's going to incorporate some of the notice and some things like inflammation. We're just going to do student devices, staff devices, and sort of where, where we are as a district at the moment. We have still the Chromebook replacement cycle. I think we had a very large chart last year. It is very simple now and it's very streamlined. We are replacing devices in grade one, five, and nine. And those have four-year accidental daily protection plans on them. So the first grade devices are designed to last until students are in fourth grade, a new device in fifth through eighth. And then ninth grade has always been a replacement because it's through their high school career. Novus is currently assisting us with repairs, tracking damaged devices. We've had to go back a little bit, a couple of years, to find out based on serial numbers, sort of what's eligible. And when we have some repairs that, items that need to be sent back, they've been helping with that because they're new this year. I was new last year, so we had to kind of wrap our, our heads around that for a bit. And they have collected inventory to help us recycle end of life devices. So we have a lot of things hanging around that were, like some old monitors that were very old that couldn't be, you know, they just had to be recycled. They use them out. We did receive certificates of destruction for anything that was sent out that might have had to. So we do receive that paperwork. For classroom devices, classroom office desktops, monitors were all replaced in twenty two, twenty three. We are estimating those have at least a five-year lifespan, so those are not approved any time soon. We are completing some quotes for a few of the interactive view sonic boards that are in all of the classrooms. There are five rooms that currently don't have boards and we would like to complete that. So once that is done, we will have a complete school setup with a board in every room. So if we ever had to swap out, like, you know, if we wanted to make another room a classroom, we would have the freedom to do that. So we had to computerize. Updated the desktops for specific testing needs. We do have to update some for things like our English learner testing. Those are done on desktops. And they are going to begin highlighting a new asset management system right now. The way that we are tracking our serial numbers is done basically on an elaborate spreadsheet. We would like to streamline that process or we are in that process of putting together a new inventory system. And there were some staff and student accounts from people who may have left the district. And because of just new hiring, they did not, you know, the Novus folks were not aware that maybe they were no longer employed here. So there were a couple of accounts, things that were taking up space. So we cleaned that up. And we are currently reviewing staff Chromebook replacement cycle. Because those were all sent out during the pandemic, the parent educators rely on Chromebooks for their primary devices. So these are the district services and cybersecurity initiatives that have come about since Novus took over. First thing is the Know Before Cybersecurity Training Program. So that is a small, like a video and an assessment to all staff to make them aware of phishing and phishing scams. And they, I'm sure you've all seen it in your personal email, they are rampant and they're getting smarter. So it's just a little quick thing every once in a while, you know, it, it sends something out to our staff. And we check to see if people will click on it. And honestly, we had an excellent score. We only had a small percentage of people that clicked on it. I, and I'm sure all the other building administrators were inundated with, this doesn't look right. Can we check it out? So everyone was really on top of it. I'm happy to report. So we had a, you know, a small percentage and we'll have some ongoing education. They provide us with a regular report. We did more multi-factor authentication enforcement on all administrator accounts. And that means not just us, like, building administrators, but all accounts that have the higher level permissions for Office three sixty five. And the three sixty five cloud backup is in place. We use three sixty five online in addition to Google. So we are in two environments right now. There's continuous vulnerability scanning. Message filtering has been changed and replaced almost to a fault. I'm sure that it may seem a little annoying sometimes when people have to authenticate all the time. But we are doing that as a matter of necessity. And again, you probably see that on your own personal devices with some more heightened security, more products that are requiring two-factor authentication, for example. So we have stepped that up here as well. So identification of filtering issues, we are using securely now, almost exclusively for filtering. We are moving available services from physical services, from physical servers to cloud hosting. Part of that is automatic updates. We were paying support plans for servers that were very close to end of life. So rather than replace some of those physical servers, we are moving into cloud hosting services. They are doing more, we mentioned this before, in-house repairs of devices, troubleshooting, the help desk ticket is going well. We are allowing either certain points of contact or other staff members who can put in a help desk ticket. They know how to reach Novus. They know how to reach out and ask for help. We are working on policies and procedures, especially if you're a parent in Bolton Public Schools. I'm sure you've got the, hey, here's our device policy. Here's a reminder of our computer policies. And please be careful if you have a Chromebook that goes off. And also more support for asset and device management. So we want to make sure that we continue to know where every single piece of equipment is. If that has to be recycled because it's end of life, they can only update for so long, especially Chromebooks. And that we're utilizing our resources the best way that we can.
And we know exactly how many we have now.
And we know exactly how many we have.
Thank you, Monica.
And then I'm going to go click again.
Okay. Any questions for Monica on this, though?
Do we, do you scan the, the item, the, the equipment now instead of barcode?
We don't, but we can. We do have new asset inventory tags. We just did not have the system into which to store them. We were putting them manually into some spreadsheets. You could scan it in, but then there wasn't a system for really categorizing that into a way that, like, we looked at this, we can track a serial number right now. If something turns up and we're like, we have this device, we don't know who it belongs to, we can pop the serial number in and the student or staff member to whom that belongs will pop up. But it's not the, the easiest search in the world. We want to make sure that we have not only those devices, but that we have the age and warranty information for larger devices, like the view sonic interactive panels, for example.
So would that, is that in the future then?
It's going to be happening this year and we're using a product that is no cost.
Okay, and then how, what's the cost of recycling all this stuff? Is it very expensive?
No, there's no cost to us to recycle. There are companies that will come recycle, provide us with certificate of destruction and to make sure that that is, you know, if they're hard drive, then that is destroyed. I, I know that they make money on their end with recycling of the material.
Yes.
So we don't make any money on that, but we rely on them to take that off our hands.
The interactive smart boards that we wanted five more of, is that at this school or the center school?
Every, both schools have interactive flat panels in all the classrooms.
No, he's asking the five rooms.
We need, yeah.
They're at BCS. Yeah, we had, for example, two computer labs, one where primary instruction was happening. That one has a board, the other one didn't. So if we. So if we choose to use that space in any other way in the future or continue to use it as a computer lab, we would have a flat panel. So, uh, there were just a couple of spaces. We also moved one. We had much smaller boards in the reading room, and they did not find that that was sufficient because they had larger groups of students. So, um, Mr. Giard was kind enough to recommission a board that was in the back. There's a, was a back computer lab and meeting space in the library at UCS. So we moved that to reading. So we would like to replace that board. Yeah, because I know that Mrs. Herrick uses it for lessons, space somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Monica, Joe, and Daryl for a strategic plan update in just one second.
Sorry.
But don't be sorry.
Yeah, it's just gonna be all that and all of it. So we're just gonna bring you back to the strategic plan. Um, talk a little bit about what Principal Giard and Principal Miss Sally spoke about at the very beginning of the year when they were setting the goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, these, as a reminder, are our strategic goals, student success, caring culture, talent development, and resource stewardship. Um, this is also going to be in the minutes. So these are our goals moving forward, all aligned with our portrait of a graduate and what type of basically person Bolton Public Schools wants to put out into the world. And for this, this year, um, both principals, we aligned, um, to three key focus areas. And in their overview, you will see that alignment to portrait of a graduate. Um, the academic leaders were all here, if you recall, in the beginning of the school year. Um, and presented to staff on the opening days of school, they worked on their, um, focus areas for the end of strategic plan. And there were three multi-year goals to improve teaching and learning that we're going to go over in a minute, and we are in year two of implementation. So this is just sort of the, how the district goals are aligning with what the school goals are. And we just put in the student success, character, the alignment to our strategic plan goals. So the focus areas are focus on school, family, and community partnerships. And on the district end, it's the allocation of funding, the support of the school's endeavors to reach out to, um, families in our community and support to ensure that everyone is able to, um, participate, attend events for their children and be present. Uh, focus on learning environment, ongoing focus on creating a positive climate and culture. And this year, our administrative team is working to create school-based teams for an effective rollout of multi-tiered systems of support, which is an expansion of the scientific research-based interventions, SRBI or RTI, as it's called in the rest of the country and Connecticut. So, uh, but the MTSS for all students that combines not only academics, but students' social and emotional development. So it really is looking at the entire picture of a student and how that contributes to their success. And focus on effective instructional practices. Um, we have that commitment to organizing and funding professional learning opportunities for faculty. Um, we are currently revising the Bolton Public Schools teacher evaluation plan, so coming soon to a board event meeting, there you go. And our continuing teacher clarity work so that we are focused on, um, really aligning our student success criteria to what our learning progressions are and our learning intentions are in each lesson in class every day. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Giard. Thank you, Monica.
Um, so as Monica mentioned, a lot of this work occurred in the summertime, so we come together as an academic leader team. And I mentioned, I think, the beginning of the year when the leaders were here, they do a tremendous amount of work over the four sessions that we meet each summer, the plan for the upcoming school year, and then we present the plan that we prepare the school improvement plan to the staff and tell them kind of like, what's it gonna look like this year? What we left off, what we completed last year? So these are the goals that we're working on this year. Uh, goal one is BCS is a school, family, and community partnership. Obviously, that school-home connection is extremely important. And on the bullets, you can see what we're in the process of completing, what we've done so far this year. So we've diversified our communication methods and social media use. A hundred percent of families are on Parentsware, which has been amazing. Parentsware was one of the best things we've ever done. Uh, bi-weekly newsletters for, uh, K to eight, so we start kind of like a disconnect, some grade levels were sending out more information than others. So we came up with a little bit more consistency and we're sending it out on a regular schedule. Uh, Power School, we've had for a while, parents and students can go on to see their grades and their progress and communicate with the teachers. And then we have a BCS Facebook and Instagram. Uh, we use it occasionally. It's not, it's up and coming. We're we're finding out how we want to use it best, but we definitely put things out from like different assemblies and different events. Uh, we've continued and expanded our entry points and opportunities for families to be involved. So we have assemblies, concerts, as Mr. Air mentioned, art shows, sporting events, K-eight winter family night, parent-teacher conferences, student-like conferences, parent volunteers are coming back into the building a lot now, which is great. And PTA events, a little bit of a plug, if you're around next, two weeks from tonight. Uh, on the twentieth of January, we have our annual, our second annual family fun night. So every staff member will be at the school, and we'll station in the gym and cafeteria. They come in, there'll be some food and refreshments. It really is a great evening, um, if you would like to. Uh, our second goal is to enhance the learning environment. So at different opportunities during the year, PLC, staff meetings and other meetings that we have, we do activities with the staff to talk about the learning environment, and that's everything from the classroom to the entire building, looking at different areas, how we're promoting positivity using our PBS in the building. Uh, participated in professional learning on trauma-informed practices. That was a a great learning this year with the two sessions. Uh, so far, we refined and agreed upon school-wide expectations. So new this year, we have town hall meetings. So Mrs. Kellerher and myself meet with all the grade levels one at a time. Actually, one of our new additions in the next coming town hall meetings, we're gonna have student input. So we're gonna ask them to submit maybe questions or things that they would like us to talk about. Because before, the first one was just us talking, so we really want to bring in their thoughts and hear what they have to say. Uh, we've implemented Ready to Learn, which is a new addition to middle school. I mentioned that briefly at the beginning of the year, what Ready to Learn is, and it's now actually scored on the report card, is coming out of COVID. We realized that students were really not ready to learn in the three years, areas of effort, engagement, and materials. So we were really fine-tuned and been clear with the students about what does it look like to come to class and be prepared even before the lesson begins with your effort, your engagement, and your materials. Uh, regular staff meetings focused around activities and new learning, uh, to enhance our classroom learning environments. Uh, one of those, for example, was this past Tuesday, we did a module five activity, which is put out by the state of Connecticut, where you read a scenario and we talk through how a teacher should handle it. We look at the code of professional responsibilities, and the teachers really make some great connections and some great conversation. Our third role goal is effective instructional practices. So we we have refined our work that we did last year and continued our teacher clarity work. Uh, new this year, IAVs and FIAVs, which are gonna be instrumental in the data we've already seen gathered, has been awesome. And it's gonna help us with the smarter balance. So the questions that the students are doing online are very similar to the smarter balance testing and the content the teachers are able to look at during the year to see like, okay, let's focus on this, let's reteach that. And it's not just about smarter balance, but it's great practice for the tests. Um, we've continued implementation of EL Education Reading Program for K to five, which is going well. Monthly leadership meetings, uh, focused around new learning and dissemination of information. Uh, planning, but implementation of MTSS as, uh, Monica mentioned earlier. And we've also worked a lot on getting into classrooms and providing flows and grows connected to the school plan. So Mrs. Kellerher and myself will go to classrooms, leave a little note that just says, oh, we see this, we see that. Have you ever thought about this? So we call it glows and grows, which is a kind of creates a great dialogue and conversation with the staff. I'm turning it over to Mr. Miss Ellen.
Any questions for Mr. Giard?
How are you tracking parent involvement? I mean, have you noticed an uptick? Obviously, a hundred percent is great on the parent square. But, uh, are you seeing a higher percentage of parents coming out for school events and engaging with posts on Parent Square?
I I look, because whenever I send out like a video, I like to see how many views I'm getting, whether it's a hundred and twenty. What is the content that's connected to the post? Is it more of like a technical message about parking and and flow? Or is it about an event coming up? So we can kind of see reports as well with, uh, School Messenger and with Parentsware, what's being opened and what's being received. And then so I'm talking to my secretary and say, okay, did this get pushed through? Maybe not. Parents will call. We'll also call parents to say, are you getting messages? So we're working hard to make sure everybody's connected. So we look at those reports. And another recent one with the family night coming up was we looked as a group for planning it. And we noticed that last year we had two waves, a K-five and then a six state. But really, everybody just showed up at the beginning of the first wave. So then there was a disconnect in like the resources and the time and the management. So we're gonna just have one big event, clear the parking lot, make sure we have plenty of parking, and then allocate our resources accordingly. And I think we're gonna have a great turnout, but we'll track it. And that is that's through your tickets that we're giving out for different prizes that are raffle. So we'll know how many tickets we gave, how to really get a handle on how many people attended the event. So we're always kind of comparing numbers and seeing is what we're doing working, is it not, how can we tweak it?
It all sounds like a great initiative. So happy to see it's happening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. They're doing a great job. Thank you, Daryl.
Being there culturally, it does feel very right. A lot of people are.
Lot of people are present, participating, uh, you know, I think you. I've got three parents sitting right here and one right there. So, right, I think we're.
I was at the book fair.
Here and one there. So I I did have four, three here, one there.
The book fair, the walkathon, another big thing around the holidays was different crafts and activities in the classrooms. And there was probably five to ten parents coming to every one of the classrooms. So the secretary said, it made me. Getting them and writing up their system.
Yeah, and I and I think we're seeing an uptick this year, even over last year. I mean, there was, it was starting to be that, right, coming out of it, right, right? But I feel like we're even in a different place this year at at both schools, I think, than we were even last year, which is.
For sure.
The PTA run events, like, they're definitely starting to. Yeah, like there was a lot, like with like the, um, back-to-school movie night, like the kids were really excited about that because they were like, okay, like, you know.
Can't wait.
Exactly. And once they figured out what movie it was.
Thank you, Daryl.
Um, so there's a lot of parallels between what happens in in the two buildings. So looking at our school, family, community partnerships, um, really expanded use of various technologies. We talked about a lot of things, but we're learning and we're getting smarter. So, for example, the TVs, uh, that are in our hallways, um, which I revamped the technology to make them work. But we're giving, we're using different content now that we have, um, Student Square. The informational day-to-day stuff is going right to student phones. Um, and things like SAT vocab words and hints for math and study hints for the upcoming interns. Now that's what's on on the TV, right? So it's it's kind of like a shift in where we send the different information to kids. Um, we're also really happy. We've got a hundred percent of our families on on Parentsware. I I never would have guessed when we, uh, thought of implementing this a few years ago that we'd be at a hundred percent of families. I won't say a hundred percent of parents, but a hundred percent of families, which is, which is absolutely huge. Um, a lot of successful, you know, to your, to your point, Ms. Davy, about parents in the building and and kind of the numbers, right? So you may recall that we've mentioned that parent-teacher conferences are kind of a new thing at Bolton High School. Uh, a law changed a few years ago that was never part of the culture that I came to or superintendent came to with something we kind of talked about. The law came around and we and we jumped in. We had approximately twice as many parents at our parent-teacher conference this fall than we had last spring. Not, um, surprisingly, last spring it was mainly grade nine families. This fall was mainly grade nine and ten. That's the culture shift. And we're excited about that. And I had a couple of, um, very successful parent roundtable meetings, and we're gonna continue those throughout the year. Uh, and another interesting, um, when you ask the question, maybe think of of this number, uh, our concerts. So we were setting up for our second round of concerts. Uh, Mr. Langworthy and Mr. Aaron went to custodians and they went, can you put out a hundred more chairs than he did last? Right, so we, it's, and it's full, right? So there are some, some real metrics to to the involvement. Um, you know, um, here's another one. Um, and if anybody in this town is listening, it's not my fault when the, uh, senior community center asks for a bigger bus. Um, so for our events where we bring the senior citizens in during the school day to meet with our culinary students and our music students, you heard a little bit about that earlier. Uh, it's limited by how many they can fit on the bus, right? And they, I I don't know if there's a lottery system or however they work it out, but we're very grateful for that partnership as well. And then trying to expand the communication and, hey, what's happening at the high school beyond our parents' square audience? Um, we've shifted a lot of what we do on YouTube, for example, as well. So with the help of Mr. Air and Mr. Langworthy and some little creativity in our, we don't really have a theater over there. Um, we're now at not only a hundred percent of our concerts going out on YouTube within twenty-four hours, but with really good sound, uh, which is something that you don't often get when you put a video camera in the back of a school performance space. Uh, and those, as Mr. G mentioned, it's fun to watch. I know, we need to get a license, right? But it's fun to watch the YouTube, how many people have viewed it. Um, and anything that's non-licensed, like I can't put the the musical, here comes the plug, by the way, I can't put the musical up there. Um, but the concerts, I can't. Um, and we're always trying new things. So, for example, for our next round of parent-parent teacher conferences, we are partnering with our theater program. Um, the theme is come for a conference, stay for a show. So February twenty-ninth will be opening night of our musical Annie. But we're also trying a different timeframe for the parent-teacher conferences. Instead of our traditional, I'm gonna say it wrong, six-thirty to eight, we're doing five to six-thirty, just to see how that affects family life with numbers go up or down. Um, our second piece of things, the environment. Just a quick reminder about our connections program. Eight or nine years ago, we changed the whole way we run the day in terms of, um, how classes meet, the timing of that. One of the pieces that we that drove that was we wanted some flexible time. We wanted time during the day where, hey, I've got a soccer game, but I really need extra help in Spanish. Or I was out sick and I need to make up the quiz in math, but I live in Colombia and there's no late bus, right? Those kinds of 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 limiting factors that are outside students' control, we wanted to give them an opportunity during the day to take advantage of retakes, redos, extra help, collaborating with peers, or really a break for some of our, some of our students. So twice a week, we have a forty-minute chunk of time for students to meet their personal needs. It's also when we bring in, uh, college visits or guest speakers or whatever, so we don't, uh, pep rallies. So we don't interrupt our school day. We don't lose academic time for someone to go speak to the, to a college representative. But we continue to evaluate that as well, and we made some, the leadership team, um, made some tweaks this summer to how we structure what happens during connections, and it's already becoming part of the culture. So we're really proud of that. Um, activities organized by the Climate and Culture Committee, Mrs., uh, Christine Johnson's baby with this. And and when you, and we read that, um, think both kids and and grownups, right? So some really nice activities with kids, you know, rewarding their hard work or just acknowledging the fact that we're we're trying to work together. Um, and then some, at those difficult times of year, like a little break or a little bit of fun for the faculty as well. Um, and Ms. Johnson is really be creative on your way out if you're not here in executive session too late. If instead of turning right, you go kind of straight, like you're heading on the other side of the building, and immediately on the right-hand side, um, Ms. Johnson has put up a display of faculty pictures from a long, long time ago. Uh, and the crowd of kids at lunch during connections today trying to identify, uh, the pictures. It's just, it's just like a nice community moment in the building. So, uh, her committee is doing a lot of work with that. Uh, and then it's also, as Mr. Giard mentioned, um, our ongoing participation in the trauma-informed practice. That has been, you know, when you bring an outside group in and you have a topic to talk about, you know, you never know exactly how it's gonna be received, but the feedback from faculty has been, uh, been very positive on that. So we're looking forward to continuing that work. Uh, and then our third one, um, the ongoing work to, you know, improve instructional practice. I spoke a little bit about this last month when I shared how we were doing, uh, or had just completed some peer observations. Um, but we have other things going on as well. So when we talk about what is it you need to be successful in your class or or how is this relevant? Uh, we, um, and again, when I say we, it's the faculty and leadership team developed a template to be part of Google Classroom across all classrooms to share information at the beginning of units about relevance and success criteria. Um, so that is what we're, that's a, that's a shift in culture as well, right? We're trying to get that embedded into our instructional culture. Um, we have kicked off our digital portfolios. This is something, um, that we started a couple of years ago that has now launched, obviously with a little more rigor for our freshmen and sophomores than our seniors, right? Because the goal is to to gather all that profiles you as a whole high school graduate, right? Everything you've learned, um, demonstrations of of everything that that we expect from a graduate. And we're rolling it out a little by year, right? So the seniors won't have as much as by the time this year sophomores, for example, are seniors. Um, that has also given us a way to track a lot of the things that are directly connected to the portrait of a graduate. Things like community service, the transferable skills, those kinds of things are not only in an organized place there, but they're in a place where students are empowered to keep track of it themselves by ultimately some sharing down the road. Um, so we're really excited about that. Uh, again, lots of things going on in our, in our Professor Development PLC time. It's so nice to have eighty minutes a week with faculty, uh, to do those kinds of things. Again, some of the things I talked about last month. And and we are also happy to be, um, participating in in, you know, kind of the implementation of the MTSS, and we created our own building team here. And that team is not our leadership team. That is a group of different teachers who have either asked for more leadership responsibilities That is a group of different teachers who have either asked for more leadership responsibilities or have, um, have expressed interest in this particular kind of work. So I'm very excited to have a whole new little subcommittee, uh, to be working on MTSS over the next couple of years.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe?
Um, I guess on relevance, so can you give a little bit more idea about how that works? So is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Individual.
Absolutely, yeah, so we break relevance into, um, three buckets. And this has been part of our clarity, we're part of our ongoing conversation. So we say, yes, you can have the conversation about relevance to your life beyond high school. Right, so we always say, oh, why do you need the, the, to know about air, surface area? Well, you might buy a rug, right? And, and in reality, some of the things we teach, that's a bit of a stress, like, do you really? Okay, but so that's only one bucket. The second bucket is what's relevant now that's going to be important in this course later? So talking, using the word relevance to talk about scaffold. And the importance of learning now to learn later, and if you didn't learn it, you didn't do well on that test, let's redo, retake. Because you're gonna need it, because it is relevant, it's not just the chapter's done and we move on. And the third bucket of relevance is to future learning. So again, that scaffolding piece, say in mathematics, you know, you really need, um, your really good pre-calculus skills to do well in calculus. But also maybe it's, excuse me, for future coursework. Maybe it's in college, maybe it's in trade school. What about your learning in school now is gonna be relevant to your learning after you leave Bolton High School?
Okay, great question.
Um, again, on the communication front, um, what steps are you taking to disseminate all of this, you know, good news about things that are going well with all public schools to audiences other than parents?
Oh, yes, so, yes, thank you, yeah. So we do have, uh, and I didn't, I just didn't mention it, um, so much to say. Um, we do have a, a pretty active, uh, social media platform. So if there's an event, um, so like the cookie tasting was a good one. Um, that isn't something that I'm gonna send home on parent square. Hey, there's a cookie thing with the, the senior citizens, right? That's not relevant there, but that would be an Instagram post to, hey, our culinary students were so glad to welcome 28 members of the, so that's where we're making that, the tie-in. So between the YouTube videos of performance-type stuff and the, the, the posts about things that are relevant outside of the, outside the, the community, to the larger community, yeah.
Yeah, I'm almost wondering if, since we give reports, well, we used to give a report to the finance. Board of Finance, I don't know what we're doing with those reports now, but, um, what if we gave reports to like the board of selectmen on, you know, we had 13 kids who made it into Eastern Regionals. So, and we had six kids who did the, you know, significant accomplishments, whether it's of individuals or school as a whole. Just a way to, you know, share with taxpayers.
Get the word out.
The success that the school system is having.
Mm-hmm.
You do, uh, sorry.
Go ahead, go.
You're probably gonna say the same thing, right? So the superintendent does annually have us look back, I think it's because it's part of the annual report, it's a look back to the previous year. And we do have, actually, all the things you just listed are, are in there.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I understand what you're saying, is there?
And I'm not disagreeing with you either, I just, everybody knows.
Yeah.
It keeps the schools in people's minds and.
Yes, yeah.
Not just keeps the schools in people's minds, but keeps a good feeling about the schools.
Yeah, yeah, so. One hundred, yeah, one hundred percent, so.
Here's where your money's going.
Yeah, right, right, like here are the great things happening. So let, I need to have a conversation with, it's a great idea, I, I've just gotta kind of navigate it, right? And because maybe PTA can push it out through their channels as well. Um, and I can have Daryl and Joe kind of, you know, because they've done this right now in preparation for this, right? Kind of put together some things, um, and maybe, you know, we can do monthly or bi-month, you know, every other month or some kind of updates, right? About all the great things that are happening.
Seasonally.
Uh, seasonally, yeah, yeah, quarterly or whatever the case may be. Um, yeah, that's a good idea, just because of sports and stuff, because then we have, right, like, you always have.
Fall, winter.
Fall, winter, you know, music, whatever, uh, the arts.
A big dump, you kind of get, get lost.
Gets lost, yeah, I agree, so let me, I've got to do some pondering, I need to probably talk to Jim Rupert, um. I'd like to have a conversation with the admin team about, you know, kind of what, when, what avenues. Um, I'm gonna ask Daryl to connect with PTA to talk about avenues there as well. And Joe can also talk to the boosters and to the music parents. So I think there's a variety of different avenues and we can talk about how we do that, but I think it's a great idea. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Chris.
Good, good looking to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, one last question, just popped into my head when we're talking about relevance, it's more of a, probably a curriculum question, but in terms of kids graduating from high school, going onto college, I feel like one of the gaps just nationally is personal finance. Is there something?
Good question. So, uh, it is now a state requirement, however, it has been a Bolton High School requirement a year before the state requirement.
Okay.
So all of our students, everyone, junior year, pretty much, Ms. Johnson, yes.
So they take a personal finance.
They do.
Yes.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
It's like.
The board implemented.
Major life skill.
Requirement a couple of years ago, yeah.
Awesome.
Great question, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Maselli, Mr. G R, and Stino Casper, all right.
Um, what else is yours?
Yeah, last part is mine, all right. And this is about the resource stewardship, so just a reminder that we do do zero-based budgeting, so like, the end of the first week of September, information goes out to, uh, administrators. It's then factored out to the teacher leaders, uh, they gather their budget needs from, uh, the teaching staff. Um, budgets are then presented to, uh, to Beth and to Joe, to Daryl, to Monica. Um, and they have a host of budget meetings, uh, where they put together the ask. Uh, they have now met with me several, many times about budget, um, and, uh, we go from there. Uh, we're continuing to maintain one-to-one devices for students. Uh, we utilize an allocation of grant funds to address the needs of teachers, students and families. Uh, we're using Title IV funding to incre- increase STEM and STEAM opportunities. We ha- as you know, we were awarded the Esser Small Town Write to Read Grant for $73,000. And, uh, I have written again, another HVAC grant, so we'll see what happens with it again this year. I will share that, um, I, I think the state tried to, um, streamline that process a little better in this year's application process. Um, as a result, I think of a number of districts applying and not getting funding last year, and I think some of it was state having to figure out, did they really have this or didn't they? So, I don't know, fingers crossed, I'm hoping, say a prayer, whatever it takes, so. That wraps that up. Any questions for me on resource stewardship? Any questions at all about our update tonight? Great job, gang, keep up the good work, thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, on the unfinished business, we have some second reads for text adoption tonight. Um, could we have a motion to approve the purchase of AP pre-calculus? Pre-calculus graphical, numerical, algebraic AP edition, 11th edition, 2024?
Sounds good.
Exact.
Uh, anyone have any questions or comments about this textbook? For discussion? All those in favor of a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Uh, second, second read is, uh, could I have a motion, please, to approve the purchase of the AP Language? They Say, I Say, fourth edition, textbook, please.
Second question.
Right. Uh, any questions or comments or discussion about the AP Language textbook? Everyone got a chance to go and check it out? All right, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, on to policies.
Thank you all for the text adoptions, thank you.
Um, could we have a motion, please, to mark the following policies for deletion? Um, 0000, vision and statement of philosophy, 0050, code of ethics, 0100, mission statement, 0200, goals for the Bolton Public Schools. 0521, equal opportunity plan on discrimination. 4112 dot 3, administrative regulations for use and disclosure of criminal justice information. 4121, substitute teachers. 4, uh, 5141 dot 7, student sports concussion.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. And then do we have any questions, comments or discussion about the deletion of any of these policies?
Um, I just wanna state for anyone who might be watching this later on, or who wasn't at our last meeting, uh, who might be wondering why we're getting rid of our mission statement.
For the best action, yeah.
It's not really that we are getting rid of them, it's that they are all policies that are covered elsewhere in our group of policies.
Correct, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments or discussion on any of these policies? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You want opposed or abstaining? Okay, could we have a motion now to revise or add the following policies? 4111 dot 3, increasing educator diversity. 4112 dot 9, code of ethics. 4116, administrative regulations regarding concussion management and training for athletic coaches, which replaces 5141 dot 7. 4118 dot 231, becoming 4118 dot 2, alcohol, tobacco and drug-free workplace. 4118 dot 3, psychotropic drugs. 4118 dot 8, sudden cardiac arrest awareness. 4118 dot 9, bloodborne pathogens. 4120 dot 2, abuse of disabled adults. 4120 dot 4, section 504 and ADA personnel. 5112, admission to public schools at or before age 5. 5141 dot 5, suicide prevention and intervention. 5142 dot 1, recess and play-based learning.
So moved.
Second.
Chris, and Ben, do we have any questions or discussion, uh, on any of these policies?
I got a question. There was one policy that was on for second read last month that we postponed to this month.
Correct.
Wanted to make sure it was in the list.
4116.
Thank you.
And 5141 dot 7, you already moved to delete because it replaces, yes, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on any of these policies? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. You want opposed, abstaining? All right, um, on to new business and retirements.
Well, I would like to share with you that Dean of Students Christine Johnson will be retiring at the end of this school year along with BCS teachers Amy Castellini, Rick Lambert and Sue Nolan. And I want to congratulate them all and wish them well, and we are going to miss them. And that is a lot of years of dedicated service to the children of Bolton, and I want to thank them for their service and wish them well, congratulations.
All right, um, future business?
None.
Um, now looking for a motion to go into executive session for a discussion regarding the terms of employment, wages and benefits for unaffiliated employees for 2024, 2025, and to invite the superintendent.
Make a motion for an executive session.
Thank you, Rita.
We seconded it, Ashley.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, and thank you all for coming.